Is mine working, testing, testing, can anybody hear me? Testing, testing, can anybody hear me?
Anyone, you guys hear me? This is Winnie. Okay, great. All right, can everybody send me their questions? Everybody can hear me then? No problem? Okay, great. If you guys can just start sending me your questions. And just want to say that, you know, thanks for everybody coming here and nice to see new faces. And I'm looking forward to being in this community with all you guys and moving forward. So not here to give a speech, so, but take your questions. I know you guys have a lot of them and we can just go from there. Okay, so I'm gonna start with Al's question. She says, what's the ETA on the welcome center? So in case anybody doesn't know, we started work on the revamping where the old rental office is and returning to a welcome center. It's gonna be about twice as large as what is, what's there now. ETA is probably, or probably maybe, I don't know, two weeks would you say, Kitty? Probably one to two weeks, so maybe more, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be ongoing. All right, I guess that's all the questions. That was easy. I'm gonna bail. Oh, I got another question coming in. But this is your chance, guys. Just send me questions and I'll answer as many as I can. Otherwise I might have a beer, so. Two weeks also, so CK says two weeks also for the rental boxes. So all the, so, so basically, we have a central tier system, pay, pay tier system, kiosk at the welcome center. Everybody that is a current tenant, they can pay right there. There's no more Casper net boxes on your property. Everybody that's a tenant should have received IM for me with information how to use, where to go. I just saw a local chat. If, whenever you can go to the, this tier station, it's all set up and ready for you to pay your tier. So if you know what your date is, you can just go there and pay. Or if you don't know what it is, just go to the tier station and just touch it and it'll show you your tier date. All right, so I'm gonna take a question from Kira. All right, this is, okay, the rental rates, okay. So all the rental rates are grandfathered. Anybody that's currently renting, your rates will stay the same. Anybody that's new, the rates will, will be different. So yeah, so don't worry about it if you're current resident, it's all, it's gonna stay the same, you're grandfathered in. All right. So take a question from Boo. He says, I'm not an artist here, but would love to be one. How do I go about that? Okay, so the best thing to do is you contact Al. She can tell you what to do, the logistics of all that. And we'd love to have you here. But Al's the one to contact and talk to you about. Okay, so Jolly Honeydew has a question. Okay, yeah, okay, so yeah, I was expecting this question and I can, I'll just answer this as best as possible in the shortest amount of time. Okay, so Jolly says, what's your vision for Campbell Coast moving forward? Will you be keeping the theme that it has? Will any rental rates be going up? Will you be charging people to host events? Okay, all good questions. So, yes, I lived in, I've lived in the community for a while, you know, I was an act, an active community member, but I really love Campbell Coast. It's easy to just come in here as a reseller, land owner, a land owner. Sometimes we just come on here and just carve everything up and just resell it. That's not me at all. So as I mentioned multiple times, trying to be as transparent as possible. My vision is to retain the same look and feel of everything here and make it better, right? So make it good, moving forward, build upon what Joy built and just make this place a great place, community and make it better. And attract more people here. I want to, I want to try to bring more people to Campbell Coast to see just exactly what the group tag is. Be an explorer and check everything out. So, and I'm working with, I want to work with everybody to do this. So the more people involved, the better it is. But yeah, I plan to retain everything. There's, there are changes that are happening right now, but I believe that these are all the best. And everybody that I've talked to has been positive about those changes. So, and the theme too, the theme is gonna be the same. So there's no changes of theme, the look and feel, the community spirit, all that, none of that's changing. It's just gonna be improvements and make this place profitable, whereas before, you know, it was a charitable type of thing. But you know, I really respect what Joy did here. She did an amazing job. She's, she did a lot and hope to build upon this with all of you guys. I already answered, the rental rates, I already talked to you that they're gonna be grandfathered in for anybody that's currently tenant. And charging people to host events. So that's a question that should be talked to by Al because it's, there's all kinds of different events and she's gonna manage all of that. So the specifics at that, when you guys have specific questions around that, it's best to talk to her. All right, I'll take a question by Cranston. Okay, it says, as someone with a little interest in the BB passport system, will we be keeping the landmarks that might bring people in to visit Campbell Coast? Okay, so I'm assuming the landmarks are the different areas of Campbell Coast that are interesting for people to visit and check out and explore. And that's definitely what we're gonna be doing. We're gonna make, we're gonna make, are very visible to the outside what we provide and make it easy for them to come here. And that's, you know, so all the main areas, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna market that in a way that we get more people. And just to give an example, right now in our group, I think we have 200 something, so I would like that to grow, grow, really grow. So you know, they don't have to live here, but they can come here and visit. If they live here, that's great. We're gonna have a lot more places for them to live. And you know, I'm hoping that number at some point can be over 1,000. So that's, that's a goal for sure, is to really let people know about the landmarks, promote them, get them excited about it and they can visit here. So, and get, get more people here. All right, so CK has a question again. Can you shed some light on how things will be managed? Who will do what people feel they're a bit in the dark? Okay, well, you remember, I just took over this, I just took over from Joy back at Thursday. So I've been, I've been as transparent as possible through group, group mail, group messages and stuff. But I can understand, you know, like, maybe that's not enough time for people to think about what's going on. So the way that's gonna be managed is that, you know, it's, it's easier for me to have, to work with certain people here that have main areas. First of all, Kitty, Kitty is amazing in what she, everybody is amazing, basically. That's, that's the way you have to look at it. I mean, that's the best way to look at it. Kitty is a great designer. She will be working with not only me, but a lot of, a lot of you to make things better and look better. So she'll, she'll just be one part, I just call them the team. So these are like team members. So there's, there's some team members that I work directly with and, and then they also, they can work with you or other people. So that's how it's, so basically there'd be delegation that way. Then there's Al, she's gonna be, she'll be running all the events and entertainment, getting traction on that and putting together a plan. So she is the point contact for that. And then we have the aerodrome, he's run by Boo, he's gonna be running and managing all of that. I can't, there's no way I could do everything. I don't want to do everything, so, you know, we have great people that can do all this stuff and, and that's the approach that I'm taking, you know? I am not here to micromanage or do anything like that. I think, you know, to keep the, in the community spirit, everybody, it's better to have everybody involved. I hope that answers the question for that one. Let me see if I have other, let me see if I have, okay, so that's all the questions I have right now. So does anybody else have questions? Please IM me. Yeah, I'd be following chat, but it just goes by too quick, so it's easy for me to grab questions from IMs. Or you guys can just start dancing, so, yeah. Beer, dancing, all that. Music, I'm all for it. All right, I got a question coming in from Lotus. All right, so he says, hi Winnie, okay, will you have a social and business group? All right, so I'm not really sure what that means. We do, I mean, the, the main goal is to have the, have this place be as very social as possible. I, I, what I'll do is I will give you guys updates right after questions about what we're doing in every single area. So, okay, he says, so social for people to enjoy the community and a business one for artists. Okay, of course, right. I mean, that's, that's the whole spirit of this community, right? Is, is to be social, to interact with each other and also to retain artists and music and, you know, art, music and entertainment. That's the goal. And you know, like, I can, here, let me just take a couple more, some more questions, but I, like, like I said, I can just give you guys an overview of what we're currently doing and what the plan is after I take these questions. And I think that will help answer a lot of your questions too. So this way you guys know exactly what we're doing. But I'll take the questions first. All right, so there's another question here by Boo. Oh, well, he's, it's incoming, so let me take, let me just, Uli, his is incoming too. CK, will you be around as a community? Yes, of course. If you haven't noticed, I'm around a lot, so you can ask Kitty, Joy and other people that have seen me. I'm trying to be here as much as possible. I do like the environment, you know, I'm going everywhere to see what can be done or how we can improve things. So I'm definitely, I, I think you can definitely label me as a community member. So sometimes you might see me over here having a beer, so at that point you can label me as a beer drinker. Okay, so, all right, so, or dance, you can label me as a dancer. You guys can label me any way you want to, so. All right, so let me see what I got. Okay, so Boo says, can I get a text chat plug in, in when you've done the aerodrome? Text chat, what is that? What's text chat plug? Boo? What do you mean by that? Plug in? All right, so I'll wait for him to define what that is. Okay, so Uli, Uli says, thank you for taking over, I like your steps. It's a good, thank, thank you so much, Uli. So I really appreciate that. So why don't I just, why don't I just jump in and start letting you guys know about what we're doing? Okay, so the first part is like, we're, we're making improvements everywhere. One of the first things we're doing is we're revamping the whole welcome center. The vision for that is the central drop-in, the location for people, not only when they drive by, but when they drop in to be able to find out everything about us. And what I mean by everything about us is that, you know, rentals obviously is one thing. A second thing is them to easily be able to know what type of events we have here. So we'll have some type of event schedule, it will be at all locations, they can easily know what those, they are, they can go to them. Other places, other things is points of interest, they can easily go to those points of interest, right? Which would be this village here, it will be these other places, they'll all be defined. Let people come here and hopefully they can come here again and get them to join the group, our group. But it's, the place is there to, for people to explore and find out about us. It's, it's, everything will be there. And if it isn't, we'll, we'll add it to make sure it is. We need to make it, we need to make this place very welcoming and let people know that we're here and get people here. That, that's definitely a vision I have. Okay, so, so when, if I, if you start looking around, the next thing we're doing is we're, we're expanding this village here. So it's a great village, I really like the design Kitty did. It's an artist's village, right? Specifically for artists and obviously you guys do music here and stuff like that. So the way, the way that we see it now going forward is this is gonna be a village for, for everybody, for everything. So a place to come to for like entertainment, music, art, all that. But also we will be putting residential and commercial buildings here with the same look and feel around. So people can, if they want to, they can live here. If they want to have a little shop here, they can have a shop. So it's gonna be a village, just a village. And this should really get it, things excited. So I can see that, that, you know, like with, what, what you guys have already done, we just expand on top of it, we improve it, right? So I can see this a place where there, we get more DJs, we have live, live concerts, live, sorry, live music performers, we have art shows, we have all that. And Al will drive all of that. So this place is gonna be hopping a lot more than what it has been and it should be pretty exciting. It's gonna, you know, it's a place to come, that, that is in the works. But we have to do things one at a time and it's not gonna be something that's done overnight, but that's one of the directions we're doing. Here in the village, okay, so I got some more questions, so I'll answer these for a second. All right, so Adway says, really nice start. Do you have plans to market in the wide array of options Linden Labs provides in their network? I'm gonna, I'm gonna market this place in every way I can. You know, like, if you guys have any ideas about things that I might not be aware of or have done, feel free to shoot them to me and I will look at that because that's the plan. We market this place, get these, this place going and thriving and you know, that, that's definitely something I'd be interested in. If you, anybody has more ideas, you just shoot me an IM and I'll take a look at it. Okay, so Fenella. Okay, Fenella says, the, the village expansion seems great, but will you keep the art galleries together or do you see them in the mix? The art galleries will remain exactly the same. Al's already been working with artists to retain them. We will also be doing, there will also be art shows for the artists as part of their tier to show their art, not only in the village, around the village, but also down in the welcome center. So there'll be rotation of art shows of their art in those areas for free as part of their tier. So the art stuff is not going away. It's all staying here. We want people to know about their art, they can go back to their galleries, buy art, you know, that, that's what we want to do. That, that is staying for sure. All right, let me see what else. Will you make Campbell Coast a destination? So, okay, so, yeah, so by destination, what do you mean specifically there? I mean, yeah, it should be a destination. I mean, like, I know that, you know, Linden Labs, they have their definitions, but whatever we can do to get people here, whatever label, whatever, that's what we're gonna try to do. So, yeah, there is a destination guide. Yeah, there's a destination guide if we can get in there. Obviously we want to do that. We want people to find this place and explore it, just like your vision, Joy. Definitely a yes on that. All right, so I don't have any, so until I get more questions, I'll keep going over what else we're doing. Just another thing, then I got more questions coming in. The aerodrome from Boo, he's, Boo is gonna run the aerodrome. I think it's a great addition to Campbell Coast. People could fly in, do whatever, like, we could probably do more expansion. But what we're gonna do is go to rent out hangars and tie-ups there. People can put their planes there, fly out, do whatever. I think it's a great addition just for another type of community member or even bringing in visitors. And then, you know, that could easily be expanded upon helicopters, balloon rides, whatever. So that can, that can all be, that can all happen at some point too. So Boo is gonna be managing all of that. If you guys have any questions about the aerodrome, contact him. So, okay, so let me see what I, other questions I have here. Lofi Jabs, how will tips and profit work in world with DJs and art sellers? Okay, okay, that's a good question. So, so the, the, there's, so for the DJs, for DJs here, you know, like, Al again is the go-to person to talk about this. But I, you know, I quickly say that tips, there, there will be, there'll be, there'll be tip jars specifically that are ours, that will be part, be available for DJs to use and, you know, and bartenders to use. We are not looking to make, we're not looking to pull in all types of money from these tip jars. I'm talking about us as a group, me as a person, anybody. It's just anything that we can get additional revenue in, you know, we, 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 we should do it. So, but it's not any type of primary source of income, it's just a way to generate additional. And of course we'll have a house, we'll have a house tip jar too. If people want to donate, they can donate. Art sellers, that, you know, that, there's no tie-in with art sellers as far as tips. Profit, I don't, I don't, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't talked to anybody about how, anything regarding art sellers and profit. I mean, if they have their own work, they're selling their work, we're not gonna take any cut from anybody. So hopefully that answers the question around that. So Fenella has another question coming in. Yeah, while I'm waiting for that question, the other thing we're gonna do is we're gonna use some of these areas, some of the, some of these areas you already have seen disappear. And the reason, I've taught, made sure to talk about, to people about these areas before we remove them. Anything that we see is not being used, we are removing it to free up prims that we can use elsewhere and as we expand. We will be putting up more different types of rentals, really, really nice rentals, not only here in the village, but we will put roadside, we're gonna do roadside, we're gonna do roadside rentals, really, really nice homes, a lot of, same theme, very private. We'll do some more commercial buildings in, in various places. We do have, we have expanded already the skyboxes, we'll see how they take off. It's just gonna be a mix of different things, but it's not gonna take away from the look and feel. All right, let me see. All right, so I don't have any, Fenella's still working on the question, must be a long one. Okay, so here, here it is. Okay, Fenella says it might be worth considering accepting a percentage of art sales as an alternative to some of, all of the rent to help artists afford to be here. Okay, so that's a good question. I mean, obviously, you know, you know, whoever is on the same thought, train of thought, you should have a discussion with, with Al and we can, we can, you know, I'm open to looking at anything. The only thing I think about this is that taking a cut from artists, artists revenues directly, I don't know if that is, might be of, you know, majority interest of these artists. I think that, you know, they like to promote their, you know, I'm not an artist, so I would rather defer this and with, to Al and anybody else that's interested in talking about, having this discussion. But that's a good question though. Okay, no, that's, that's a really good question, Fenella. So definitely talk to her, brainstorm about this stuff and see what you guys come up with. Okay, so. All right, okay, so let me, okay, so I don't have any other questions right now. Let me see if there's anything else I can talk about. Like I said, we're looking at all the different areas around Campbell and we are, some of the places, you know, we're removing some of the places, we're expanding it, some of them, we're making things, we're beautifying more of them. Anything that's not really being used or it seems like, you know, we can do more in those areas, we will do more of those areas. We're gonna take advantage of all the real estate. And when I say that, I'm not talking about just like building everywhere and putting up rentals everywhere. I'm talking about, you know, beautifying it and when we do rentals, it's gonna be fitting nicely, they're gonna be, they're not gonna be placed really tight. And you know, like I said before, I'm not here to like, you know, change the look and feel and, and this is not in a, this is, this is not a commercial thing for me to come in here and rip everything up and just get rents in here to pay tiers. That is not what I'm here for to do. So I have, I've, I've worked in many different, I've, I've beautified other Sims mainland as well as estate Sims. I know how to do this, I've done it before many, many times. So that's my interest. Otherwise all I would do is just resell mainland and not care about anything. So that, that is not, that is not me. So that, you can talk to anybody, that is not me. Anything that we see is not being used, uh, we are, um, removing it to free up prims that we can use elsewhere and as we expand. Uh, we will be putting up more different types of rentals, really, really nice rentals, not only here in the village, but we will put roadside, we're gonna do roadside, um, uh, we're gonna do roadside rentals, really, uh, really nice homes. Lot of, same theme, very private. Uh, we'll do some more commercial buildings, um, in, in various places. We do have, we have expanded already the skyboxes. We'll see how they take off. It's just gonna be a mix of different things, but it's not gonna take away from the look and feel. Alright, let me see. Alright, so I, I don't have any, Fenella's still working on the question. Must be a long one. Okay, so here, here it is. Okay, Fenella says it might be worth considering accepting a percentage of art sales and as an alternative to some of all of the rent to help artists afford to be here. Okay, so that's a good question. I mean, obviously, you know, you know, whoever is on the same thought, a train of thought, uh, you should have a discussion with, with Owl and we can, we can, you know, I'm open to looking at anything. Uh, the only thing I think about this is that taking a cut from artists', uh, artists', uh, revenues directly, I don't know if that is, uh, might be of, uh, of, um, you know, majority, uh, interest uh, of these artists. I think that, you know, they like to promote their, you know, I'm not an artist. So I, I would rather defer this and with to Owl and anybody else that's interested in talking about, having this discussion. But that's a good question, though. Okay. No, that's, that's a really good question, Fenella. So definitely talk to her, brainstorm about this stuff and see what you guys come up with. Okay, so, alright. Okay, so let me, okay, so I, I don't have any other questions right now. Let me see if there's anything else I can talk about. Uh, like I said, we're looking at all the different areas around, uh, Campbell and, uh, we are, some of the places, you know, we're, we're removing some of the places, we're expanding it. Some of them, we're making things, we're beautifying more of them. Uh, anything that's not really being used or it seems like, you know, we can do more in those areas, we will do more of those areas. We're gonna take advantage of all the real estate. And when I say that, I'm not talking about just like building everywhere and putting up rentals everywhere. I'm talking about, you know, beautifying it. And when we do rentals, it's gonna be fitting nicely. They're gonna be, they're not gonna be placed really tight and, you know, like I said before, I'm not here to like, you know, change the look and feel and, and this is not in a commer, this is, this is not a commercial thing for me to come in here and rip everything up and just get rents in here to pay tiers. That is not what I'm here for to do. So I, I have, I've, I've worked in many different, I've, I've beautified other Sims mainland as well as estate Sims. I know how to do this. I've done it before many, many times. So that's my interest. Otherwise, all I would do is just resell mainland and not care about anything. So that, that is not, that is not me. So that, you can talk to anybody. That is not me. But just to make sure that everybody's clear about that. Okay. Alright, so there's another question. Uh, Katori says, any idea when the tier kiosk would be up for galleries? So we can pay into this. Yeah. So, so the tier, so gal, that's a good question. So we just started the tiers getting, um, artists into their galleries and, um, we will have the tiers, the, the tier systems. Everybody will pay tier down at the kiosk. It doesn't matter if you're a ga, artist gallery person, a tenant, or you're running a ha, a hangar in the aerodrome. Everything's going down there. So, uh, we expect to get that going hopefully by, uh, before the next tier is due, uh, which would be, uh, probably no later than, uh, uh, Friday or Saturday. Okay, so B for Joy, Joy says, yeah, that's a great question. Okay, so Joy says, will there be tours for groups to and from Campbell Coast? Is anyone interested in being a tour guide to increase traffic? I think that's a great idea. Again, this, this, these types of things, it should be discussed with, with members here and then drive them up to Owl and then we could all look at it together and see how we can do this. But anything that can increase traffic from, from here and, uh, from here to other places or from other places here, we should definitely look at. I do not have all the answers for that. I am open to all ideas from all of you guys and we will roll with what it is. Uh, we, we, no, this is not, uh, the, uh, Joy also asks, is this a Casper Lake? Yes, no. This is, this is, uh, what I've developed years and years ago. We're using a central tier system. Um, and it works really, really well. People all go to the same place, pay their tier, and they, they can have a beer, too. We can just set up like a beer stand there and everybody can like, do whatever they want to do. So, we're, actually, we're gonna have a, uh, a bar down there and a stage. That's another thing, too. We want to have events. So we're gonna have, uh, you know, um, Kitty is gonna put a stage down there and a bar, just like up here, down there. Uh, so when people drive in or visit, they can just hang out, right? Or if they're watching some type of event we're having, they can hang out. Alright, let's see. Lofi says, are you looking for more traffic as the main goal? That is not the main goal. Um, as I mentioned, the main goal is to retain the whole look and feel of this place and improve it. That's the goal. And, and also get people here, which is part of that goal. So, uh, traffic definitely, it's important that we have that so we can get people here. So that's one of the things that we will be improving upon is how to get people here. But that is not the main goal. No, it's just one of the goals, so. Alright, so let's see who else. Uh, we got Freddie. Alright, he's, um, he has a question still in flux. Yeah, yeah. Joy, Joy says, uh, traffic isn't very well in SL, but traffic as in visitors. We want lots. And that's exactly what we're gonna do. It's all about getting people here and, um, them experiencing everything that we have here and, uh, you know, how we, how we count that, I don't think, you know how we count that, actually? Is we look at the group, group member numbers. We're gonna make it very easy for people to join it. If we're getting numbers in that group is increasing, then you're knowing, then you know that we're doing well. That's the way that we measure success of how we're doing with people coming and, um, staying or visiting or exploring, uh, Campbell. Okay, Tintin says, I'm wondering how much staff you intend to hire since we're already overworking as it is. I am always, more events means an army of workers. Okay, so, yeah, that's a good question, Tintin. Again, this is something that I defer to Owl because she is gonna create the whole plan for events and, uh, and activities and all that. So as we need more people to do these types of things, uh, she would be the one that, uh, would manage that and, and make decisions on, on, on us hiring people or taking people on. So, but that's a really good question. So Boo's, okay, so Boo's gone. Uh, let's see. Uh, Freddie, let's see, Freddie Honey? Honeydew, okay. Um, I know before there was a thing where no one used band lines or orbs. Is that gonna stay, please? Alright, so here's the thing, like, okay, so band lines I hate, right? I think most people hate band lines, but people want privacy, right? They don't want people, especially if we're gonna get more traffic and more people here. There's gonna be more people wandering around. I don't have a problem with orbs as long as the orbs stay within the radius of the house that they're in. That's the most important, critical thing. So people should have privacy, they should have security. Orbs is the way to do it without interrupting the look and feel of, 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 uh, people's, uh, of different, uh, uh, neighbors and things like that. Okay, let's see who else. Again, if you guys have questions, please IM me because I'm not looking at local. I think, I think, uh, besides the questions and answers, I think I've, I've, uh, covered a lot of what we're initially doing. So, uh, I think at this point, it's down to questions and answers if you have more. Or you guys can start partying. Either way. Alright, Kira, I think has been coming in. Let's see. Okay, so here's, Kira has a good question. Please consider it, yeah, we should not have people auto ejecting using orbs. That will be a policy. You have to give people time to get out of your space. So twenty, thirty seconds, I think, should be enough. Uh, but we should at least do probably thirty seconds. You need people to, you need people to be able to, who accidentally go into your airspace, to be able to get out of there with auto ejecting them to some, you know, teleport hub, right? Or whatever. So, that's a good question. That's a good question. Alright, let's see. Far has a question. Let me get to, let me get there. Oh, is he still? Okay, so it's still, okay, Uli. Alright, so that's not, not a question. Okay, Lofi's trying to sit, type a question here. Alright, you guys can start dancing or whatever. Don't, don't let me stop you. Okay, Lofi says, okay, no, that's an old question. So let me take a look at who else I have here. Letitia, Letitia says, alright, that's not a question. That's, uh, IM, so I'll deal with that later. Alright, Susan says, thank you. Uh, you're welcome, uh, Susan, so. Jolly Honeydew has another question. Will nudity be permitted? Some areas rated mature still don't want nudity. Yeah, that's a, that's always a tough question, right? Like, do you want a bunch of nude people just walking around the welcome center and just hanging out, having a drink? I don't know. I don't know about that, right? Or in the village, just, you know, like a group of nudists, just like hanging around. I, I don't know if that's like the thing that we want to like do here is, is to, to, to be known as a nudist colony. Um, I think, you know, one thing we could do is we could have areas that, that allow nudity. Uh, I think that would be the best thing that we could do to, uh, get, uh, to have an area, if the people are into that, would be to provide an area like that where, okay, you want to be nude outside your home and, but in Campbell Coast, here's where you go. And, um, that's, I think that, that's the route to take. Okay, um. Let's see. Lofi says, who is free to create events or a type of role and who do I speak to if we want to bring something new to the village? Okay, so, again, who is free to create, anything regarding events, Owl's the one to talk to. If you want any type of activities, entertainment, Owl's the one to talk to. She will handle everything like that. Um, if there's something that we need to discuss, I can talk to, Owl will talk to me about it. We can figure something out. Um, if you want to bring something new to the village, same thing. You can talk to anybody. You can, you can talk to, uh, it's best to talk to like, you know, like Kitty, Owl. If you, to get the, the quickest response and the longer dialogue, it's better to talk to some, not to me directly, uh, just because of time. Um, you know, I, I can, I can have meet, one-on-one meetings, but I can't do it a lot and I can't do it frequently. So if you really have, want to have in-depth discussions, start with one of them and then if that's something of interest, um, then they can discuss it with me. Alright, so Lotus has a question. We have naked Saturdays as before, but only do so in people's home. Yeah. So yeah, that, I mean, yeah, you guys have this naked, um, Saturdays. That's, that's awesome. I mean, you know, that's somebody's private residence. So like I said, way to do this is to provide an area in Campbell Coast, if there's demand. If there's only one person that wants this, then it doesn't make sense for us to do anything, right? We're not, we can't spend with cycles or money on creating some type of area that there's only a few interests in that. But until we really see a lot of interest in that, and, you know, this is probably a back burner type of thing. Alright, so, okay, questions? Okay, so I don't have any other questions right now. Does Owl or Kitty, do you have anything you want to say? And let, show, uh, local, do any of these guys? Otherwise, I say start out the music and, uh, let's, you know, get a little party going here. We got enough people. Thank you all. Thanks, thanks Cranston, CK. Honeydew. Joe, Honeydew, thank you. Thanks, everyone, actually. Um, that's wonderful meeting all you guys. I'm sure I'm gonna run into you guys a lot. And we can make this a better place, so. Alright, let's see. Who's gonna be the first dancer? I don't see anybody dancing. I think maybe Owl maybe should be the first one. Ellie's dancing? I have to increase my, uh,